At this time, I will reconvene into open session the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for September 7th, 2023 at 6:50. Members of the public may access the meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. One or more trustee may participate in the meeting via video conference call. A quorum of the Board of Trustees will be physically present at the Administration Building. Thank you all for joining us tonight. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone to participate in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we do have business to conduct, so disruptions will not be permitted. Anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or may be escorted out by our security. We welcome civil input, but we insist that we remain respectful and civil. Thank you for your cooperation. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Mr. Chapa in leading us into pledges.
My pledges and pledges to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to disruptions to those around you. And now, if you would join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. First on our agenda is a program by Lamar High School.
Yes, we do. We have the Lamar High School Choir with us tonight. So President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz, everyone lucky enough to be here tonight, and everyone watching online. This is our very first student performance. Y'all probably didn't know that, but you're the very first of the year, and we're thrilled to have you here with Lamar. In total, they have over 105 members of the Lamar High School Orchestra. We just brought a few tonight. The strings are here tonight to perform for us. And like most of our kids in the fine arts in the Arlington ISD, their talents go well beyond just the orchestra. These kids participate in everything: PTEC, AVID, the National Honor Society, football, tennis, LULAC, swimming, robotics, basketball choir, theater, student council cheerleading band, the Vi Queens, and that's just to name a few. So they really do pour their heart into their music, but into their studies as well. It's a cultural tenet for these kids at Lamar to basically not separate their achievement from their self-worth. But they have, they won't brag on themselves, but I'm gonna brag on them. A lot of our orchestra students of those 105 rank in the top 2% of graduating seniors every year from Lamar High School. Yes, that does deserve a round of applause. So besides preparing for the seasonal concerts and UIL orchestra evaluation, they participate in solo and ensemble contests, the all-region and all-state audition process, and they perform frequently throughout the community. The performers for the Lamar High School String Quartet tonight are Rukshani, Rick Rama Toluca, JJ Izagira, Lupe Padilla, Logan Hazelwood, and Sebastian Rodriguez. Their head director from Lamar Orchestra is Andrew Walton, and tonight, they're gonna perform a very joyous upbeat tune called "Sunburst," and it's from Alan Lee Silva. Enjoy, everybody.
That was absolutely beautiful. I wish you all could just play all night, but I guess you got that school thing going on tomorrow. Thank you all so very much. That was lovely. We'll give Frank a minute to get set up. Are you ready? We are now ready for our September 2023 Student of the Month from Arlington High School, Ms. Stacy Humbles.
Good evening, Dr. Wertz, President Fowler, and members of the board. I'm pleased to present to you Gabby Webb as the Arlington ISD Student of the Month from Arlington High School. As you all know by now, I always select students who excel in all things, who engage in multiple aspects of high school, and still make time to make the arts a priority. Gabby is exactly that student. She's an exceptional student academically, who ranks in the top 10% of her class with all Advanced IB and AP classes. She's heavily involved with our school leadership groups and truly embraces servant leadership. She has served as the Secretary of STUCO and is currently serving as the Parliamentarian, and she's co-president of the Fashion Club. Outside of school, she serves as an officer in Students Against Gun Violence and is a teen board member of Therefore!, a Christian organization for girls. She's served countless volunteer hours and has served for Mission Arlington, Central Bible Church, Camp Thurman, the Cinderella Charity Ball, and even went to Rwanda for a mission trip. As a Cinderella candidate, she was also awarded the Katherine Lautzenheiser Scholarship, and she's been awarded the Arlington ISD Kindness Award. Finally, Gabby is a standout dancer and has been practicing dance since she was three years old. She received instruction from the amazing Ms. Persis and company, and we are blessed in Arlington ISD to have an amazing dance program where she has continued her craft. She currently takes dance at the Dr. Marcelo Cavassos CVPA as a part of their Contempco, which is the Contemporary Company. I'm sure you all recognize her, as she's performed for the board numerous times, including at this year's convocation. I'm so proud to have a student like Gabby at Arlington High, and I'm honored to have her here with us today. I introduce to you Gabby Webb.
Thank you, Ms. Humbles. First off, I would like to say thank you to President Fowler, sorry, Dr. Wertz, and the Board of Trustees for inviting me here tonight. I would also like to thank Ms. Humbles and the AISD, Arlington High staff, as well as my teachers, mentors, and friends who have supported me throughout the years. Joining me tonight is my mom, Rainie Webb, my dad, Chris Webb, and my grandmother, Jean McClung, or as I like to call her, Shugs, and my principal from the CVPA, Ms. Isaacs. Without these people, I would not be the person I am today, as they continue to push me to be my very best. Most teenagers might consider having two parents who are involved in law enforcement and justice as a little bit of a bad deal, but my parents have always taught me the importance of leadership and service. Additionally, my grandmother, who served for 20 years on the Fort Worth Independent School District as a board member, has instilled in me the importance of education, the arts, and speaking out for what I believe in. And I truly believe that the opportunity I've been given to attend Arlington High and the CVPA has allowed me to grow those skills and deepen my appreciation for things like the arts and leadership. In the future, I hope to attend the Savannah College of Arts and Design and major in fashion design, where I hope to pursue a career in costume design for film. Thank you once again for this opportunity.
Gabby, you are an incredible young lady.
Thank you so much.
I am so impressed. You're so well-rounded. You have your hand in so many different things, and apparently you do everything well. So we are so proud of you, and we're so honored that you're an AISD student, and we look forward to following your successes, because I guarantee there are gonna be a lot of successes for you in your lifetime. I feel quite certain of that. May Dr. Wertz and I come down and give you a gift?
Yes, please.
Ms. Gabby, this is a pin. You see that we're all wearing them. This is a very special pin, and we only give it to very special people, and you are one of those people. So we want you to have this and wear it when you want, put it away in your jewelry box, whatever you want to do, but know that you were awarded this, and not everybody gets one of these. Just very special people like you. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
And this is a small token of appreciation. It's a little award that you can actually put somewhere in your house, in your home. And I want to say you're one of the most articulate students that we've ever had here at the podium, and your parents must be so proud of you. So you have goals, you know how to articulate them well, and we know that you're gonna go lots of great places, so congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We are now excited to learn about our Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation, and I'll call on Mr. Peralis.
Good evening, President Fowler, Dr. Wertz, members of the board. Another first of the school year, where we have the opportunity to say thank you again for a community that blesses us by providing support day in and day out. Before we get into the award this evening, just want to give a little bit of clarity and awareness. Since 2014, we've been able to share the Community Engaged for Excellence Award with community organizations. And over the summer, we did a little bit of refining, working with our Communications and Marketing Department, and rebranded our engagement programming to be in alignment with our strategic plan. Hence, we have the first-ever Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation, and so I'm excited to share that this evening. So, established in 1949, the Arlington Board of Realtors, also known as Arbor in the community, is a nonprofit organization that provides business services to more than 3,000 local realtors and industry partners. As engaged members of the community, Arbor supports a variety of community outreach initiatives with their members. Arbor has supported our Arlington ISD learning community with support to our students and staff. For more than 15 years, Arbor has provided five $1,000 college scholarships annually to local students, including Arlington ISD students. When you do the math, that's approximately $75,000 supporting students' higher education. Now, for the past five years, Arbor has also supported beginning-of-school-year events by supporting a school supply drive to support local districts, including Arlington ISD, and they deliver those to those districts and to those campuses. And most recently, another first, for the first time ever, which they hope to be an annual event, Arbor hosted 300 of our AISD staff members for a kickoff luncheon, a beginning-of-the-school-year kickoff luncheon and celebration. This event was much appreciated by our staff that were able to attend. It helped to energize them to have a strong beginning of the school year. And then also, in the engagement work that we get to do for the last 10 years, Arbor's been a great connector for us with our Realtor community, and they help provide a voice to the realtors as we're working alongside them as well. So thank you for that as well. So for their commitment to supporting education, our school district, the Arlington Board of Realtors, is receiving the Arlington ISD Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation, the first one ever. And here to accept is Walt Lunman, Director of Association Management. Mr. Lunman.
I'm not a man of many words, so I'll make it very short and sweet. Thank you very much on behalf of the Arlington Board of Realtors, Arbor, our 3,600 members and affiliates, and thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Arbor has been such an amazing friend to this district, and we appreciate you all. I attended the luncheon.
I was out back grilling.
You were outside grilling, exactly. And it was just so wonderful to walk in that room and see it filled with our employees being so happy and having a delicious lunch and just being appreciated. And that's what they told me. They said, "This is, you know, lunch is nice, and it's nice that they're doing this, but we feel appreciated. They're doing this for us." And I just love that sentiment, and everyone in that room was just happy to be there and very appreciative of what you were doing. And I think it says it all when there were over 300 people. I know you all had to cut it off, because more and more wanted to come, but you had 300 people show up, and you-
And you want to have more.
Exactly. We hope so. We hope so. Thank you so much for everything that you do for this district and for what you've done for our employees and our students. We really appreciate it. May Dr. Wertz and I come down and give you an award?
Absolutely.
Thank you. This award says Community Powered by Possibilities Award of Appreciation, presented to Arlington Board of Realtors, Your Volunteer Service to the Arlington ISD, September 7th, 2023. Thank you so very much.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for your partnership. We couldn't do what we do without partners like you, so thank you.
You're awesome. We now come to Open Forum for Agenda Items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on the agenda are required to register at www.aisd.net. Board meeting speaker requests no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
We have no requesters for agenda items. We have one for non-agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. Now we will consider administrative ratifications and appointments. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal at Arlington High, Assistant Principal for Lamar High, and Assistant Principal for West Elementary.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do we have a motion to approve the administrative ratifications discussed in executive session?
A motion?
We have a motion. We have a motion from Ms. McMorrow and a second from Mr. Will Banks. Please vote. All vote in the affirmative. The motion carries. Thank you. Dr. Wertz?
So the first one we have is a new sister principal at Arlington High School, Vanessa Vasquez. She's actually not here this evening, so I'll tell you a little bit about her. She's out of town at a scheduled trip, but-
She's at Disney World.
She's at Disney World. There we go.
Awesome.
Okay.
Excused.
Ms. Vasquez started out in Garland ISD as a fifth-grade bilingual teacher, and then she went to Mansfield ISD, and she served as a fourth-grade bilingual teacher and as a seventh and eighth-grade AVID teacher, and then also as an ESL specialist. And then she came to Arlington ISD as an ESL instructional specialist in the Department of Rural Languages, and then a restorative practices specialist at Arlington High. She earned her Bachelor of Science degrees, Bachelor of Science degree in interdisciplinary studies at University of Texas Arlington, and her Master's in Curriculum and Instruction and also at UTA. So congratulations to Ms. Vasquez. The second person we have tonight is the new Assistant Principal at Lamar High School, Dr. Nicholas Thompson Davis. So Dr. Thompson Davis actually served in Child Protective Services before he came to the Arlington ISD and also Safe Haven at Tarrant County. And in Arlington, he served as a fifth-grade math teacher at Morton, a sixth-grade math teacher at Morton, as one of the Aspire Assistant Principal interns at Short Elementary, and then also as an Assistant Principal at Workman Junior High. He earned his Bachelor of Arts degree in Math and Criminal Justice at UTA and a Master of Education and Curriculum Instruction at UTA. And then there's something that's very unique, I think, for Dr. Thompson Davis, is he earned his master, a second master's degree and a PhD on the exact same day. He had one graduation in the morning and another in the afternoon.
Oh, my word!
The Master of Education was at SMU in Leadership and Policy Studies, and then his PhD was at UTA, where he earned an educational leadership. So congratulations, Dr. Thompson Davis. I'm not sure how anybody can find the time to do both of those at the exact same time, but hats off to you. And then the third person we have tonight is the new Assistant Principal at West Elementary, Ms. Angela Smart. Ms. Smart has been in Arlington for quite some time, and all of her time has been at West Elementary. She started as a fourth-grade teacher at West, then went to fifth grade, and then back to fourth grade. She served as a kindergarten teacher and as a special education resource teacher. She earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in English at UTA, and then she also earned her Education Leadership and Policy Studies, Master of Education, also at UTA. So congratulations, Ms. Smart. We're happy to have you.
Thank you to the two that are here and the one that's in Disney World. We appreciate you accepting these new positions. We always try to get the best of the best, and you are examples of the best of the best. So thank you so much for agreeing to your new positions. We have a little area outside that has a little backdrop, if you'd like to get pictures with schoolmates or your principals or family members, and that's out there. We know that you'd love to stay for the rest of this meeting. It's just, I know you're interested and you're excited about it, but you have school tomorrow, so you must go home. Thank you all so much for being here. We appreciate it. We now move to Discussion Action A. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. Our first Discussion Action item is the Tasby Policy Update 121 and several local policy updates. These items were actually brought to the board for discussion last meeting, and since the Board Governance Committee meeting has met and reviewed and made some further refinements, we've invited Dr. Hill here to share those changes with the board for consideration. So thank you, Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Good evening, President Fowler, and members of the board. Again, to kind of go back to a little bit of discussion on Tasby Update 121 and the additional local policies. We were here previously, we presented at the last board meeting for discussion, and I'll just go through this very briefly. The policy encompasses legal and local recommendations, and administration recommends modifications to four additional policies. As you all know, this, legal updates are changes in the law, and there's no necessary action that's needed to be taken by the board, and the local updates need board action to adopt, revise, or repeal the policies. In this policy update, there are 60 policies, 48 legal and 12 local, to go along with the four that administration are recommending. Again, the process is administration has reviewed these. We've taken them before our legal counsel. We've had dialogue back and forth at Tasby and the Board Governance Committee, and we presented to the full board back on August 17th. I won't go into much detail on these, because you've had them, but here's a look at some of the legal policies and the recommended changes, and the local policies and the recommended changes, most of which minor changes to the policies that Tasby recommends. And then the local policies, again, at FFI, I'm sorry, the four, CH, FDA, FDB, and GK are all local policies that, GKD, I'm sorry, are all local policies that administration recommends minor adjustments to approve. And so with that being said, we do recommend that the board approve the changes to the policies as presented in Update 121 and the additional four policies. We'll be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Do we have any trustees with questions? Do I have a motion to accept? Ms. McMorrow?
Thank you, President Fowler. If there are no questions or discussion, I want to go ahead and make a motion. I move that the board approve local policies included in Tasby Update 121 and local policies CH, DEA, FDA, FDB, FFI, and GKD as presented.
Thank you, Ms. McMorrow. I have a motion for Ms. McMorrow. Do I have a second? Thank you. A second for Ms. Richardson? Please vote. The motion carries. Thank you. Now Discussion Action B, Consider Student Code of Conduct. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. As you know, the 80th- As you know, the 80th legislative session just concluded, the regular one back in the spring, and many changes came about, and one included several items that impact the student code of conduct. And so our next item is for the board to consider an update to the 2324 Student Code of Conduct, and Dr. Hill is here this evening to share some details about the update, and these have also been reviewed by the board's governance committee. Dr. Hill?
Thank you. I'll just continue right down the process. And so as you may recall, back on May 18th, the board approved the 2324 Student Code of Conduct. During that approval process, I had some discussion with you all about the possibility of additional changes that are, may come as a result of once the session closed. And as form would have it, that did happen. There are four, three, I'm sorry, three or four, three, I think, House bills that changed that have an impact on the student code of conduct, and I'll just go very briefly through those now. House Bill 114, increase the consequences for the possession or the use of electronic cigarettes on school campus or school-related events. And that increased consequence basically was moving it from a Level 3, which carried a consequence of an on-campus disciplinary consequence, moved it to Level 4, which made it a more severe off-campus turning point or possibly expulsion for violating the student code of conduct in that manner. Senate Bill 37 further defined hazing, and it also addressed harassment both on and off-campus, and addresses acts against a student that endangers a mental, physical, or mental or physical health or safety of the student, and the education code is referenced there as well. House Bill 3928 was very detailed, and it addressed a lot of issues with dyslexia and related disorders, also addressed special, I'm sorry, additional instruction for students with dyslexia and some additional ARD requirements. We've presented this to our special ed department. They reviewed it and added and made the recommended changes to the Student Code of Conduct pending your approval tonight. And then administration is recommending additional change for students who offend or student offenses related to drug and alcohol to a minimum of three weeks of drug and alcohol counseling being required, and we recommend that change based on some of the language that came out of this session and how we were able to actually operate that within the district. So we recommend that change as well. So in summary, increase consequences for e-cigarettes, further defining hazing, and addressing those dyslexia-related orders and the drug and alcohol counseling. Again, we, you all approved the document back on May 18th, but these are additionals that actually took place on September 1, and we needed to update the document pending your approval. So that being said, administration recommends the board approve the modifications to the 2324 Code of Conduct as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Mr. Choppa?
Thank you, President Fowler. Dr. Hill, I had a question on HB 114, the one dealing with e-cigarettes. Is that, does that also, I'm assuming that includes vapes?
It does.
As well?
It does.
Is the, moving it from a Level 3 to a Level 4, is the off-campus placement discretionary on the district's part, or is it a required off-campus change?
It's a mandatory, it's a mandatory placement. However, the length of the placement is not spelled out in code.
Okay. So are there any other sort of similar code of conduct offenses at Level 4 that require off-campus treatment? Like if a student were caught with alcohol on campus, is that automatically an off-campus suspension?
It depends. I don't think possession of alcohol itself is a mandatory DAP or expulsion. However, that's been our constant, our consistent way that we've handled it throughout the district.
Okay. Because on the one hand, I really appreciate that we are creating now mandatory counseling for drug and alcohol offenses by our students. I think that's the way to address them. I'm a little bit, and I understand this is a state law change, but, you know, we are dealing with kids, and kids make mistakes and stupid decisions, but something, you know, to me, something like a vape offense, an e-cigarette, or having a cigarette on campus, we need our students learning, and, you know, with counseling and things like that, I think that's something that's a better answer than just off-campus punishment, removing the students from their normal educational environment for something like that as a first step. I'm just questioning the wisdom of doing that as a mandatory first step. But again, I also wanted to highlight that the counseling part, I think that's a really important change that we're making that's for the best of our kids.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Richardson?
President Fowler, thank you. If we don't have any other questions, then I would like to move to approve the updated 2324 Student Code of Conduct as presented by Dr. Hill.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a motion by Ms. Richardson. Do I have a second? And a second from Ms. Haynes. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. War, Dr. War, thank you, Dr. Hill. Appreciate it. We now move to discussion action C, Consider Special Session Legislative Agenda. Dr. Wertz?
So Dr. Hill is not quite off the hook. He's still here. So as you know, there's a highly anticipated special session that we expect to have called by the governor in October, and so there's been some discussion by the board's governance committee to really consider how to take the legislative agenda that the board's already adopted and narrow it down to some of the highest priority areas for our delegation to consider as we move into special session. So I've invited Dr. Hill here this evening to share some details and for you all to consider the revised agenda.
All right. We'll continue on. Thank you, Dr. Wertz, for that lead-in, and again, we're here as a part of the opportunity of what we anticipate to be a second call special session. So as you all recall, back last fall, we worked with the board and our administration and others to create the legislative agenda, and we had five areas of focus, as you can see on there, school finance, human capital, learning lag, parental rights, and school safety. That's what, that was our battle cry, if you will, going into the session, and we all made several trips to Austin to, you know, advance this agenda, if you will. We do anticipate a special, a second special session being called this fall, and we want to narrow our focus, if you will, to school, finance, and unfinished learning. And the Board Governance Committee, along with administration and our partner consultants at Hillco, have drafted a revised legislative agenda, again, with the, with the original legislative agenda being a starting point, with the focus for this one being strictly on school finance and the learning lag or A through F accountability. And so the school finance summary is we were looking to advance the message of increasing the basic allotment, increasing the security allotment, increasing instructional materials and technology allotment, rejecting any legislation that diverts public funds to private institutions, and the base funding on enrollment rather than attendance, which is the current mode of operation, if you will. And then the unfinished learning is very simple. Revamp the accountability system to reduce an over-reliance on STAR testing because we know that there is much more to determining actual student improvement and advancement than what can be shown on a STAR test. And so with that being said, we work with the governance, I think it's Governance Committee, the Finance and Academics Committee, to draft this, draft agenda. You all have a copy of it, and that's what we present to you tonight for consideration as we go into this anticipated special session.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, Dr. Hill, and I, I just wanted to thank the Governance Committee, David Will Banks, Leanne Haynes, for revisiting, not changing, but kind of funneling down our priorities for this upcoming special session. And I think that was important because if we prioritize everything, if we, if we communicate to our legislators going into this special session, everything's important, then the reality is nothing's important. We really have to be targeted this time in order to get our, our biggest priorities across. I think the resolution that we passed and signed last time was a step in the right direction, but I think this revised and shortened, not changed, but shortened legislative agenda will also reiterate the fact that we, we need an accountability system that's fair. We're not wanting to continue to cash in more and more chips on one test administered on one day every school year, and we really want to make sure that our legislators are hearing that, and we're, we're here to have that conversation with them if they, they always are great about it, but we want to be able to continue that dialogue. So we're looking forward to that, and I just want to thank the Governance Committee for their commitment to revisiting that agenda. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. And if I could just add, I especially like the part of funding based on enrollment, not attendance, because whether students show up or not, we still have to pay for a teacher to be there. We still have to pay for the custodians to be there, the ladies that prepare the meals. We still have to pay for all of that regardless of whether the students are there or not. So the funding doesn't match with operations. And I wish that the legislators would, would understand that, and it would be much better to base it on enrollment, not just attendance.
Correct.
So I appreciate y'all bringing that up. All right. Do I have a motion to? Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and I just want to echo what you said about moving funding to enrollment-based and not, we, you know, this past pandemic has proved the flaws in a system that is based on attendance and not enrollment. And, but not only that, I think the injustice that we came into this legislative session with a $33 billion surplus, and in the end, our teachers lost. There was no additional funding, there was no increase in the basic allotment, and there was no teacher raises, and we know where Texas ranks in terms of how much it spends, and those teachers deserve a raise. And I think we need to be very loud and clear that we need those things in the basic allotment, the basic allotment, and those other items that we identified, in addition to moving to enrollment-based. But it's going to be a huge battle this legislative session, or this special session, and we need to be loud and clear. And I, we've, I think the three of us, you and Ms. Richardson, were at one of our local delegation's town hall, and it seems the communities heard the message and they supported, and we all need to amplify those voices from our, our community and make sure that everyone in Austin hears how important it is. And with that, I do have a motion. I move to approve the recommendation to the changes to the legislative agenda to address the specific items to be addressed in this special legislative session.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. I have a motion for Mr. Will Banks. Dr. Raj?
I second the motion, and I just wanted to say thank you, Governance Committee. Having served on it, I know the work, and we've just gone through policy updates, student code of conduct, and by the way, there's been a resolution last time, and now look what we're doing now with legislative agenda for this special session that's coming up. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It's so important. It's a very, very busy time for you guys. Thank you for the heavy lift. This particular motion and what we're about to adopt, I feel, is, it's so crucial, not to belabor the point, but going on what President Fowler said and Mr. Will Banks, there was so much promise at the beginning of this past regular session, and we know that this legislative session post that is likely going to occur in October, that the tea leaves say it's not, it's not going to necessarily end real well. It's going to be kind of difficult. So I'm very appreciative that we have partners to walk that walk with us down at the Capitol. It's very disappointing. Lots of good things were discussed during this past session. There was a lot of surplus dollars, and at the end of the day, let's hope in this special session, assuming it does happen, that we can move that needle to get caught up with what has not been adjusted for in that basic allotment as far as inflation that we are all experiencing and the increased cost of supplies and materials along with that inflation. We have been very good stewards financially, fiscally, as a board, as a district, and it just, it's really bothersome to me personally to see what I, I feel is pushing aside the most important strategy as a state that we have to our future, which is the absolute education of our youth. They are our future. They are our success. So I'm hopeful, these are not just words as far as what this is, and I hope that it is heard. So thank you, guys, for, for your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Raj. So I have a motion for Mr. Will Banks and a second from Dr. Raj. Please vote. The vote carries in the affirmative. Thank you. We will now address the consent agenda items, which consist of routine items grouped together for approval as one item. Unless removed from the consent agenda, these items will be acted on at one time with no discussion. Trustees, are there any requests for items to be withdrawn? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Move to approve.
Move to approve from Dr. Raj. Do I have a second?
A second.
A second from Mr. Choppa? There we go. We have, one, two, three, four, five.
Month records show that I voted yes.
All right. So the motion does carry. Thank you so much. All right. All right. Dr. Wertz?
All right. So this is, it's probably feeling delayed to most people because usually this is a topic we would have covered a while ago, but results are in. We don't have ratings yet, of course, because those aren't yet scheduled to be out, but we do have our actual data in terms of how our students are achieving. And so tonight I've invited Dr. Lopez and Dr. Buell to go over our STAR results and look at those compared to the targets we set for last school year and to provide some additional information, some questions, answer some questions. So, Dr. Lopez.
All right. President Fowler, members of the board, and Dr. Wertz, thank you for your time this evening. As Dr. Wertz indicated, we will present on the preliminary STAR results, and we'll include the accountability subset, and then give y'all an update on our House Bill 3 status. So I'm going to go ahead and just kind of, we chunked this, so it was maybe a little bit easier to follow, though some of the slides feel, might feel a little redundant because it's a lot of charts and tables, et cetera. So we're going to start with just overall subject results. And so for this year, for our overall reading content area, our percent at approaches or above was 69%, and that remained the same as what we did in 2022. Our percentage at meets or above was 43%, and there was a slight drop there from 2022, down three this year. And then our percentage of masters for reading overall, 13%, and that is down 7% from what we did last year. For math, we were at 67% at approaches or above, and that is up 2% from what we did in 2022. For meets or above for math, we are 35%, and that's up one from last year. And then for masters, we were at 13%, and that's down two. For science, overall, 69% were approaches or above, and that is up two from what we did last year. We are at 38% for meets or above, and that stayed the same as what we did last year. And then our percentage masters, 13 again, and that's down two from what we did last year. And finally, social studies, 72% for approaches or above, and that's two over what we did last year. And our meets or above was 45%, that's up one, and then our masters was 23%, that's down three from last year. The masters, you'll notice, kind of over for our overall subject areas is down, and that mirrors what... And that mirrors what the results from the state show, just a drop in masters across the state. And might be some might be due to the STAR redesign, difficulties of the items has changed, new item types, et cetera. There's a lot of reasons that could be contributing to that. So but we're not we're not wildly different from what the state's doing there. Okay? And just then, if you'll see the note, it's hard to read from the video. Y'all do have the presentation at hand. But it said the percentages that we are reporting out reflect performance of students predicted to be included in accountability calculations. And then this contains all the tested subjects. All right? So that's not just any and all testers with us in the spring. That's our accountability subset. So now going into particular subjects and disaggregating by grade level, what you'll see is just the 2023 results themselves and by grade. So reading the table here, first row, we've got third grade. And the percentage approaches or above is 65%, meets or above is 38. And then the masters percentage is 11 there. I'm not going to read each line to you on this table. I'll let y'all take a glance. But I just wanted to show you the difference from the last table, which had our difference from 2022. That's not on each grade level slide because that's coming up in the next section. So but just overall, kind of, you know, that most of our subjects for reading were in the 70 to mid 70 range. Do have some some kind of lower performance in the kind of those kiddos coming right in, third grade. Could be a multitude of reasons. I'm not going to get into theoretical. We have not dug down into third grade. However, the team does have a response to how they're how we're going to address it. And then English one and English two need to, you know, they those need to come up in the approaches percentage overall. There was growth in English one and English two, so that's fantastic. So we came up from what we did in 2022. But it's still just slightly lower than fourth through eighth grade, and so we need to to keep improving there. And then now this next slide is our STAR math results disaggregated by grade. And the same same layout here, so just the percent at approaches or above, 62% for third grade. The percentage of meets or above, 34% for for third grade, and then 12% masters. And then the rest of the the grade levels repeat that same flow. And so we've got pretty much kind of 60s to low 70s at our approaches or above. And then our science results, so our fifth grade, 53% approaches are above, 26% meets are above, 10% masters are above. And then you'll notice that the difference that fifth grade class performed much lower than our eighth grade or even our biology kiddos. And so there's some work to to do there. And then our social studies, we have the two tests, eighth grade, social studies, and then U.S. history. So for our eighth grade kiddos, 51% approaches are above, 24% meets are above, and 11% masters are above, which is very different from our U.S. history scores, where we have 90% approaches are above, 64% meets are above, and then 33% masters. So need to need to do some work with our with our eighth grade kiddos. So that's that was just just the performance on the 2023. So what we're going to do now is the next couple of slides are going to start, they're going to look similar because it's the grade level trend in each of the subjects for the past five years. And I I say five. However, you'll notice we only have the four points because in 2020, we did not test. So we have our 2019 results. And on each of the visuals here, you'll see that we have three lines. The dark blue represents approaches or above. That teal greenish color is the meets percentage or above. And then that that pink corally color is the masters or above. And so it's going to go, you know, navy coral teal on all of them, obviously. And so it goes from 2019. Then you'll notice that that bar just kind of like right in the middle of the 19 and 21. That represents that two-year gap between 19 and 21. So because we did not test in 2020. Then moving into the 2021, obviously, that's that was our 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 comeback. A lot of virtual learning going on, a lot of COVID absence requirements. You know, we had 10 days out with any positive test, et cetera. We remember all of that, those good times. And so our our scores were very low. You'll notice that dip that happens on on almost every single line in 2021 increase up to 2022. And then ideally, we would like to continue the the upward slope. And that we see that happening more on the math and and less on the reading for the 2023 year. So we will be addressing that this year. So for for third grade, we have reading and math on this particular slide. So what we noticed is we have a dip from 22 to 23 in approaches, meets, and masters for our third grade kiddos on that reading test. We couple of things there where there's there is writing incorporated into this test now at every grade level. There are new item types. And so it there may not have been those things on the screeners and the other assessments that that they're taking K through two. So may have contributed for to to the the drop in the scores at the at that third grade level. So but for math, they pretty much pressed on 62% last year and this year. It's like 1% increase, 33 to 34% for our third grade kiddos. And that's not large, but at least, you know, a slight uptick in the in the meets. And then a slight decrease in masters. So moving on to fourth grade, the fourth grade reading increase at the approaches, although slight. A drop in the meets and a drop in the masters for the fourth grade reading. And then for math, increases at approaches, meets, and masters for our fourth grade math test. Fifth grade, we have reading and math on this slide as well, and slight drop in approaches and pretty steep drop in meets and masters for our reading scores. And then approaches and meets increases in the math scores. And then just a slight drop at the masters performance for our fifth grade. And then that fifth grade science, we had we had a two to 3% drops in approaches, meets, and masters levels. For sixth grade, just reading and math again tested. So and in increase at the approaches and at the meets percentage for our sixth grade reading kiddos, and then a drop in the masters for reading. Increase at the approaches level for math, and then 2% dips in meets and masters for our math tests for sixth grade. And then for our seventh grade kiddos, we did have it, we had a drop in approaches, meets, and masters for reading. But then on the math side, we had the increases at approaches and a large percentage increase in meets. And then that slight 1% drop in our masters level. And then we'll finish off with our eighth grade. Eighth grade reading, we did have drops across approaches, meets, and masters from 22 to 23. And then pretty much maintained in math, but we had a slight increase at the approaches and and the meets. And then maintain that masters percentage for our eighth grade math test. Science, maintained approaches, increase in meets, and then a slight decrease in, no, excuse me, not slight, 5% decrease in masters. And then for social studies, 1% drop in approaches, and then stayed the same at meets, and then a 2% drop there at the masters level. But I think what you noticed on every single slide was a drop in the masters percentage pretty much on every grade level and on and every subject. And so the concerning thing there is that we're not sure how to interpret that. We don't we don't know what, how to feel about that considering that across the state, the masters dropped in the same fashion. So maybe we were slightly above or slightly below the drop, but it kind of happened across the board. And so it feels like part of the redesign, although I don't want to come, I don't want to overly say that is the reason. So but it does feel that way. And then our STAR EOC performance for English one, we had an increase of approaches, meets, and masters. English two increased at approaches, slight drop at the meets level, and then we maintained at masters. These aren't new. We saw these results in June, but we wanted to refresh now that we kind of have everything. Algebra one, an increase at the approaches, but then we know we had that drop in meets and masters in algebra one. And then biology increases at approaches and at meets, and then maintained our masters performance. And then for U.S. history, the same increases at approaches and meets and then a slight drop in our masters performance. So. All right, so those are the the STAR results, how we did in 2023. Still really difficult to, like I said, difficult to interpret and kind of assign due root cause when there's just a lot of changes taking place. So we'll continue to work through that. Regardless, we set House Bill Three goals, and so we'll give the House Bill Three goal performance update now. We've consolidated this all into one slide just because we already had a lot of redundancy in the other slides. And so so we've given our reading and our math goals. So the left table shows the reading House Bill Three goals. So we had a pre-K four goal, and that was to accomplish 68% for our composite reading score. And we exceeded that. We reached 74% of our students being where they where they needed to be from the end of the year, a little circle reading assessment. And then the rest are STAR. So third grade, our goal was to reach 71%. And unfortunately, we did not reach the 71. We we made we reached 65%. And then for eighth grade, our goal was 81%. We reached 75, so did not reach the third or the eighth grade reading goal this year. English one, our goal was 68%, and we exceeded that with 71%. And then for English two, 72% was our goal, and we exceeded that with 75%. Then moving over to the math table, our pre-K four goal was 86, and we we exceeded that with 87%. And for third grade, we were trying to get to 67, not quite there, 62%. For eighth grade math, wanted to come up to 72% and didn't quite get there. We got to 65%. And then for algebra one, we were aiming to get to 75%, and we did. We exceeded that by getting to 77%. And again, just a reminder, it it states it on the bottom. It's it's these are based on our accountability subset of our, so it's our snapshot students. And and then also, no, I think that, oh, yes, there was, for English one, it's not all the retesters. It's the first time testers, just the note is there, but I wanted to call that out for transparency. And part of reporting out is reporting out on the subgroups. So now that we've looked at just the overall grade and subject and whether they reach their goal or not, we also disaggregate by the subgroup. And we get, we do as much with pre-K four as we can get to for the accountability subgroups. But like, for example, like special ed former, you can't be special ed former when this is your first year in school. And so like, some of the groups you'll see are not on the pre-K four slide that are on the third grade slide or the eighth grade slide. So overall, for for both reading and math, I'm hit a majority of the reading subgroups and about half of the math subgroups. And then those that we didn't quite reach, we were within 5% of the goal. So for for example, our Asian subgroup for reading, the goal was to get that subgroup to 80%, and we didn't quite get there. It was at 76% for that subgroup for the end of the year assessment. Reading and math, again, on this slide, but for our third grade. And so we have some some wins on the subgroups. So our for reading, our Asian subgroup met their goal. Unfortunately, none of the other subgroups met the goal for on the reading assessment. For math, however, we had our Asian, black, special ed current and special ed former groups made their goals. And then the yellow and the the red subgroups did not did not quite reach the goal that they were supposed to reach. Eighth grade reading and math. So again, a few subgroups hitting their goal. But overall, majority, not quite, the subgroup's not quite getting to where they needed to be. And I think that's obviously that was reflected in the overall grade level, either meeting or not meeting their goal. English one and English two, those subject areas where we exceeded for the entire grade level, you'll notice we pretty much exceeded for almost all subgroups. The only exception there is our white subgroup, our English two. We didn't quite get the 1%. And then for algebra one, majority of our subgroups reached their targets. Hispanic two or more races, and then our special ed former group were within 5% of the goal that they were supposed to reach. So we have to report out on this, and that's part of the updates that we give to the Board. So those will those will come kind of as we do our our CA one and then our our benchmark. So we'll now move into a changes overview like I I kind of alluded to before. It's it's kind of difficult to be in the year that we've been in with the changes that we've gone through. And so we're just going to kind of, this this slide was not our creation. We have noted that the information originally presented on this slide came from Hillco Partners. However, we wanted to just include, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel here. And so just shows some simultaneous system changes that impact 2023 growth scores and then eventually are going to impact domain ratings. And we will most likely be seeing that in the next couple of weeks. We'll possibly be seeing that in the next couple of weeks, depending on how all of the lawsuit stuff goes. So in 2022, students had the option to test online or on paper. And in 2023, tests were only given online, with the exception of a handful that met the specific accommodations. And so in 2022, the test was based on just number of test items, each item's worth one point. Well, in 2023, items could be worth one, two, all the way up to five points. And so the test is based on the number of points, not the number of items. For 2022, third through eighth grade, the reading test was a reading test. And then now in 2023, third through eighth grade, the reading tests are reading and writing and include not just a composition or a short response, but there are revising editing and edited editing questions within the non-written options. So then before, in 22, it was a multiple choice test. And now there's 75% of the points can come from multiple choice, but 25% of the points have to come from the new item types. And there's, I mean, y'all have kind of seen, we've shown y'all some of the examples of the new item types. Scale scores remain the same since 2016 on the 2022. However, scale scores changed, and that was equated and rescaled this year for 2023. In 22, student gain scores were calculated by progress measures and in a scale score difference for categorical and a continuous variable. And then this year, it's the growth is calculated just on a transition table of categorical differences. And then there's not, it's not just four. There's now six categories. And so expanded that that little matrix that we've shown y'all. In 22, the cut scores for Spanish STAR reading were at or below the English cut scores, and that's not the case for 2023. Also, in 2022, testing from Spanish to English growth was not available. However, in 2023, the growth is going to be now available, even if you test in a different language. So that's different, new and different. And then in 22, the closing the gaps, the domain three, domain, the the one that I'm like, this is this is the crazy one. Before, the targets were just you either hit the target or you did not, so you earned zero or one, and then that was it. But now we have the the graded outcomes, so it's zero all the way up to four, and four being the goal that you're supposed to be hitting 15 years from now. So to get full credit, you have to do what you should do in 15 years. And so the the changes on the assessments and then the changes on some of those accountability aspects, they 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 will impact each of the domains. And again, this this slide is our, we pulled from from our Hill, from Hillco, our Hillco Partners. And so for for domain one, that's the the student achievement. And so the test changes on RLA, new item types. And then overall, they they noted that what they were seeing is that it's more difficult to reach the meets and the masters level. We particularly saw that the the hit for us was at the masters level. We aligned with that. We didn't so much see the the difficulty or the drop at the meets level for our test. It was more at the masters level, so we aligned with that. Domain two A for academic growth. So there's it, you're, because less people, less students are earning meets and masters on this test, it seems like by design, by the STAR, because of the STAR redesign, that's automatically going to hit domain two A. Like, we're going to take a hit on our growth scores. And when, if y'all recall, last year, we had something like 80% of our students earning the growth that they needed to earn. um earning the growth that they needed to earn, and it most of our, seventy two of our seventy five campuses took domain two A as that their best domain. Um with the redesign and the fact that not kids across the state aren't getting to the masters percentages that they were getting to before, that is going to impact the growth um overall percentages, so. We don't have it officially yet, but we we know that's going to impact if if and when we get them, so. Um anyhow, there's there's the multi-part items um that so you get a point here instead or two points there, and so that calculates, that pulls into the scale scoring, and that's just a change that could impact growth. Um and then the designations which were between high and low for did not meet and approaches, that wasn't there before, so. Be interesting to see what that looks like once we move out of this transition year. Uh two B obviously is, it relies on your domain one performance, okay? So two B is going to be impacted because domain one has impacted, so that's just there. Um and then the domain three impacts, um you're you're not rated on all your performance groups anymore, it's your two lowest performing groups. Um the consolidation of the ECO DIS and emergent bilingual and special ed. So instead of looking at those groups um uh kind of, you know, uniquely, they're just kind of consolidated into one group, so um that's gonna lower the number of groups in your denominator. Which we know that that introduces volatility, which they actually talk about also. Not only um is there volatility by decreasing the number of groups that were going to be um gradated, but the group size for that smaller number of groups also reduced, so. Anyhow, all of those things are going to impact the domains, and so just, we need to just be aware of that, so. Um and so they they the next slide also from Hillgo is some takeaways, they they pulled a quote in from Commissioner Marath, and it says, one of the things that has been underway is that the legislature has told us to do a pri- pretty significant rewrite of the STAR test. Almost so that it might even be worth calling it a new name. So this year, that rewrite takes effect. Okay, so we we know the commissioner is saying that this is a extremely large difference, um large enough, like to where um kind of like accountability, it's it's not really, doesn't really feel like a refresh, it feels like a rewrite. Um and so the example here showing like the third grade reading test was once comprised of four single passages, a poem, and forty multiple choice items. And so now, it's six single passages, then there's paired reading passages, um up to thirty multiple choice items, at least ten no- non-multiple choice items, so those new item types, and then one composition. Um so uh that this is, this has never happened before, where we've redesigned the test and rescaled, and then also redesigned um the accountability system, so this is different than twenty eighteen, when it was just going from indexes to domains, um because we've just got change happening everywhere. We've seen this slide before, um we previewed this, I can't remember if it was the last um meeting or the one prior, but recently, um and this was when we were talking about the what-if calculation. So because all of these changes were kind of uh about to occur, um DEA gave us our 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 what-if ratings. So what if they had taken our twenty twenty two results and applied the twenty twenty three um accountability rules? Even though, golly, they still aren't final, so it's uh however, what we know at this point in time, um it it's it's basically like just two different recipes, two different cooks in the kitchen and in the same bag of ingredients. And it's like the twenty twenty two accountability manual kind of used all the ingredients, and we we were able to see our our beautiful three-tiered cake, um and those same results, it was like the this, the twenty twenty three accountability takes the little bits and pieces, and then and gives us our our what-if calculation, which is just like this itty-bitty little cupcake, and they're like, that's okay. Cause this is gonna happen to everyone, so just know it, and and so just be okay with it, it's like, alright, well, thank you for the information. So um so anyhow, that's um that is what what it is, and it it is underway, so. Um but but now it it feels, it's like when the when the what-if calculations came out, you know, we likened it to this baking analogy. But now it's feeling even like, now we're into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, kind of still waiting on um the rules, the final manual, um just got the results, and it feels like the rules are changing from something that we already did months ago, and so um I mean, a very, a very clear uh example of this is that things that um measurements that were that were put in place when we had our twenty twenty two class um would have would have resulted in a a field goal, we were gonna get an extra three points in that game, and then all of a sudden, here comes twenty twenty three, and it's like, oh, never mind, and even though that those, that game is over and those kids have graduated, um we changed things and we moved the goalpost, and so you actually didn't get a field goal, so sorry about that. Uh but but your score's just dropped a little bit, it's okay, don't worry. So that just feels a little odd, um and so, you know, um we knew how we would be rated, what the test would look like, with our with our class of twenty, or excuse me, with our twenty twenty two um star results, and then what students needed to to do to be deemed successful. Um but then twenty twenty three, it's like, we we're just kind of using what we had available throughout the year, where we don't we don't teach to a test, um but when you don't even kind of know the full composition and have the the practice tools fully uh designed, we were kind of just pulling in anything that we could, it just uh it just feels a little odd, so. I guess, so we're we're looking forward to the the results, so we'll we'll see those maybe soon. Um however, uh we do have, we we have started the school year, we are not phased by this, um right now, we are focused on the kids. And so Dr. Buell is gonna come up and talk about our district approach um to accelerating a learning um in particularly in reading, because we know that um that needs to be an area of focus for us this year.
Thank you, President Fowler, members of the board, Dr. Wertz. Um I'm here to talk about our response to this, as Dr. Lopez said, we're not going to wait until we get the results, we have students that were dedicated to their education, and we're pressing forward. And and have been uh since the spring of last year, and we first started talking about what are our plans for the upcoming year. So I'm going to focus on the district approach to accelerating learning and reading. We've been working on our district improvement plan, setting our goals for this year and our objectives. And tonight, I just want to break down some of the specific strategies and reading that we're talking about. Some of this we talked about previously, and I'll bring it back and and kind of give you an update on that. But we updated our comprehensive literacy plan to include district resources for teachers and to also align it with the science of teaching reading. This is really important, most of our teachers in grades K through three, we still have another cohort going through, but most of them have participated in the Reading Academy, I know I've done it myself to go through it. And um so we've learned a lot of new strategies, and we want to make sure that we are aligning what we're asking teachers to do with the best practices that they're learning. So this has been a process, we've involved a lot of teachers in that, we've gotten their feedback as well. And to make sure that the resources that we're providing help them to provide the best tier one instruction they can, because we know that's what's gonna move the needle. And so we've gotten a lot of good feedback, we will continue to monitor the CLP and seek feedback. We've got some processes in a minute that I'm gonna talk about as far as progress monitoring, that will inform that as well. And we'll continue to revise that as we go through this year, so that we know we have the best curriculum and resources and guidance that we're putting out there for our teachers. Part of the um uh additional resources that we're providing are the unit pacing calendars and the learning progressions. This is really important, prior to having this, we had teachers at campuses working and kind of reinventing this, so when I think about this, this is an efficiency for our teachers. It helps to provide the pacing for which they're gonna roll out the curriculum, and um the prerequisite skills for it, and how long they should be teaching it. That's all really important, if we can provide that, or at least a guide to that for our teachers, it helps them when they sit down to do the lesson planning process. So we've gotten a lot of yeses in the meetings when we've met with them, so that's really good, we like it when we give them something that that is helpful. We also have a lesson planning process that we've rolled out, and it it kind of makes it sound like, oh, here's your lesson format, it's not that. What it is, is it walks them through the process of planning a strong tier one uh lesson. What I love about it, and the positive feedback that I've received, is that within that, there are the resources. So if it tells you to go to a focus document, there's gonna be a link in there. If you're supposed to go to Curriculum Central or Teaks Resources, there's gonna be links. And so a new teacher that sits down to to embark on this planning process, the supports are there, and I think it's like, don't quote me, but I think it's like a two-page, it's a little over a page, maybe a two-page document. They can follow that process, click on the links, and it really helps them, so that they're not going to multiple places to access those resources. The next is the development of exemplar lessons um that have been integrated into the companion documents, such as our sheltered instruction, our plug-and-play activities. So this has been something that curriculum instruction has been working on um in order to provide some examples for our teachers as they're doing that planning. The next, we know that we're now required by law to have thirty minutes of the daily instruction and phonics and word study. We know, looking at our data, that this is important, this is part of aligning our practice with that science of teaching reading. Um we've had HMH, HMH um is now what we're putting out there for all of our teachers to use. And HMH in response to um the requirements and the science of teaching reading and that push, they've gone back and and really added some things to that I think will be helpful to our teachers. For example, in K two, our teachers will use the HMH structured literacy side slides. In third grade, the show and teach foundational skills, and in fourth and fifth grades, the lesson slides that focus on reading and vocabulary. So by implementing this district ride, it really gives us um um just um a very structured approach to teaching reading versus where you might have kind of a haphazard a teacher teaching what they think a student needs. As our students go through the system, there will be a very structured approach, because their first grade teacher should use this, then their second, then their third, and as we know, in Arlington, we have students that will change schools. And so this is another tool that will help to provide consistency, and it's especially important for our youngest readers as they develop. I think we're seeing that on our third grade reading scores, and so we want to really focus on on bringing up strong readers coming out of second grade. The next is expanding the availability of decodable readers to K three. Um those are on order, they should be in any time, um and we're gonna roll that out along with some training, because we know we're asking teachers to teach a little bit differently. We need to arm them with the resources in the classroom to be able to do that. They've had these, but we're expanding it so that they can use them in the classroom, and we're also, you'll notice we're providing them to our third grade teachers. Because we recognize while they may not use them as much, they need it as a tool to differentiate that instruction for students that may not have those prerequisite skills, so we want the teachers to have them readily available, so when they're doing small group instruction, they're able to leverage that. Um we also, um I think one of the things we're really proud of in Arlington is the professional development um that we offer, every day the PDC was filled, in fact, you couldn't even find a room, I don't think, in the district because of all the options that we offered for our teachers, but I think the one thing that's different is that our curriculum and instruction department did a really good job of making sure as we as we changed the CLP and brought it in alignment with the science of teaching reading, they made sure that the offerings that they provided this summer um really helped prepare our teachers to align their teaching in this way, cause in some ways, it's a little bit of a shift. And we wanted to be sure that we were enhancing what they were learning in Reading Academy, and for some of our upper grades, that we were introducing some new concepts to them. Making them feel well-prepared to be able to to teach reading in the classroom, so we will continue that, we provide ongoing professional development um as well throughout the year. We're also fortunate to have an instructional coach in every one of our campuses, done a lot of thought around that um last spring and over the summer. Um to really make sure that our instructional coaches are aligning that support with, we're aligning with math and reading, so if they're departmentalized, but we're making sure, here we're talking about the reading, that if they're coaching a teacher in reading, that it's around the best practices. For example, if a teacher is focused on small group instruction, that it would be in the context of reading, and that's where the support and the feedback would get, it just kind of streamlines that approach and aligns all of the support that we're giving uh to our teachers in the campuses. Um content conversations, I'm super excited about this, cause I've just actually seen some of the training the last couple of days, and we've gotten some good feedback about it. We've done content conversations for for years, but one of the pieces of feedback we got um from teachers is, I'd really love to go, it's after school, uh they may have competing demands and they can't get there. So listening to that and getting feedback from what would be most valuable during that from our teachers, we um are having content conversations this year, it will be that we kicked our first one off this summer. We will have it five days, and it will be during the teachers' their teaching day. So in place of a staff meeting after school, where they don't have to leave their campus, and so every one of our teachers will be able to participate in content conversations, and um it'll be at their campus, it will be co-facilitated by our lead teachers, which I think that's a great authentic leadership development opportunity for them. And someone at central office that is broadcasting simultaneously across the district. And so um we're excited about this, we know it'll be something new, and we'll have to keep thinking about how we're doing it, making it better and better. But the good thing is, we will be able to say that every teacher, so in this instance, we're talking about third grade, every third grade teacher will have had the opportunity to preview upcoming uh curriculum. And they will be um exposed to and know where to access the resources to then go back and plan that good tier one instruction, so um I think that's a, that's a milestone for us, and I'm super excited about that. Um and so far, we're getting, we're getting good feedback, we'll continue to do that and make sure that it it aligns with the needs of our teachers. Um the other is the implementation of the campus progress monitoring. This is something that we started rolling out last spring, um knowing that we really wanted our campuses to be able to drill down to student level data. So our instructional leadership teams under the Office of School Leadership has really focused on developing a pretty comprehensive um progress monitoring system that will look at things like our USAs, our CAs. Um it'll look at our screeners that we administer, there's a cycle, so that after we do each of these things, the teams will come together with the instructional leadership team, and they'll take it down to the student level. And they'll be able to make those mid-course adjustments, to make sure that every student is making the learning gains that they need to. So um it's it, they're pretty, they're pretty well-developed systems. And uh our principals are leading this, like I said, with the instructional leadership teams. Um our executive directors are going out to the campuses to support them in this process. And so we're pretty excited about taking our data-driven instruction to that next level. And really making sure not only are we talking about data, but we're acting on the data. Um parallel to that is our district progress monitoring team, so we have a cross-departmental team that's going to come together. And we we've already, we've already been meeting, um even as we rolled this out, but we're going to come together to monitor that same data. Because there's system implications, for example, if we have our students do in-class and we pull that data, and we notice that system-wide, we're struggling in a particular area, then this cross-departmental team can come together and can dig into the curriculum. What have we asked them to do, how many days did we spend on it? Uh is this something that last year was a similar problem? Because then we can do um some changes and modifications to the curriculum or to the pacing guides. What do we need to do if it's system-wide, then we probably have a system-wide response. So at the district level, we're going to be looking at that same thing and mirroring that process, so that hopefully we can have some process improvements in place too, so it's tier one for us on this. Um but we're committed to that process, and we'll we'll provide some updates. The next is a CLP-focused um walkthrough. Um and this was in the CLP and the CMP that I shared with y'all previously. I think the good thing about this is that it provides clarity. What, if this was implemented exceptionally well, what would be the key indicators that we'd be looking for? That's fair, and we want to be sure that our teachers understand that, it's kind of like providing a descriptive rubric for them. We want them to understand, we want our coaches to understand, so that they're coaching towards the the same things. Our principals, our central office, so that we all have a common goal around what good implementation looks like. Now, when you look at the walkthrough, you know, it's it's robust, but we know that when we implement that, we've got to take that down to bite-sized chunks and help them, and and we know that that's gonna be differentiated, some campuses, some teachers will be at a different space on that. I always want to talk to principals, I say this, we're on this continuum, we have to know where I always wanna talk to principals, I say this, we're on this continuum. We have to know where we're headed. And you have to know where you are. And we want you moving along that continuum towards the goal. And that's really what you can ask of anyone. And so that's what we'll continue to focus on. Uh, but it starts with clarity around the walkthrough and an understanding of what we're actually implementing. We also know we have um quite a few new teachers and bridge teachers in the district. And we've, we've provided support for them and will continue to do that. But they're also going to receive targeted instructional uh support through the coaches this year. Um, they're using a Get Better Faster as one of their coaching tools, as of many. But um, to really help our teachers be able to prepare for good tier one instruction in the classroom. They're also assigned a mentor and this is our first year to really revamp our mentor program and roll that out. Um, we want our teachers, whether they're new teachers or experienced teachers, to feel very confident. As they lead instruction in their classroom. And so that's the goal. We talked uh at our last board meeting about the rollout of our one-way dual language. We know that's going to impact uh literacy. And so we're really excited about that. And I think that that's going to make a significant difference with our bilingual students. And the last thing I have is our daily intervention and enrichment time. And this was a schedule change this year. This was something that we worked with all of our elementary principals. All of our, all of our principals have an uh intervention and enrichment, but we really focused on it with our elementary because it was perhaps the biggest shift. Remember, they put their PLC time within the day and then they created the uh enrichment and intervention time. That space is important because as they do the data analysis and the progress monitoring down to the student level. We want the teacher to have a space to go back and teach those prerequisite skills, to go back and do a reteach. And when that's built into the schedule, that's more likely uh going to be the case. So um, we have, we have worked through that with all of our campuses and all of our campuses have really rolled out. Um, some pretty masterful, master schedules this year that I think will really serve the students well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bill. Ms. Richardson?
Hi. I think my first questions are going to be for you. I'm so sorry, you're comfortable and sitting, but. Um, when we are looking at the data that was given to us with the approaches, the meets and the masters. Can you tell us a little bit, just so we're all on the same page and know the information we're working with? What was the cutoff for the approaches category? When we are looking at, you know, um, we are saying, for example. What was the grade they had to make to get into the meets category, to get into the?
Oh, so that's different by grade level. So, but they're, they're vertically scaled. Um, so it, it was at one point, it was like thirteen forty-five scale score in third grade. Then for fourth grade, it was fourteen sixty-eight. And then for, for fifth grade, it was fifteen fifty. Then sixth grade, so it was, it grew in um different increments. So it wasn't like, oh, every year it jumps up a hundred points. And, and then it's, the, so the approaches, meets and the masters, I mean, they, they're different.
Did it dramatically change with the new test this year?
They equated, um, and I don't, I don't know what exactly went into it. Um, so I don't know what, if it was IRT or if they did like linked, if they did. I, I don't know if it was equal percentile, frequency, any of that. And as soon as any of that's published, we will be looking for it, cause we'd be just interested, cause we like that kinda stuff. Um, but so I'm not sure what their process was. The meets values, the approaches values were within um, you know, a, a reasonable range. From what I looked at across the state from last year to this year. With the exception of the masters that just seemed to reduce, the, the masters dropped um from, from last year's, just.
Thank you. And the report that you were doing, when you gave us that yellow bar? That showed us this is the new test, this is the new. That made it much easier when you're looking and you're realizing, this is a whole new ballgame. This is a whole new. So thank you for putting that on there. That helped it make sense for myself. Um, I had two other questions and I think these are gonna be for Dr. Bill. Um, when you're, when we're looking at these statistics with our different demographics. And maybe this is for both of you, to be honest. What are we doing to help our historically marginalized students who continue to not meet these goals? Because to be very blunt, because that's what I am. Um, our black students are underperforming every single time in every single subject area and in every single grade. The only grade that is performing low to lower is our sped students. What are we doing?
So one of our strategies will be to take it down to that individual student level. So when we talk about the progress monitoring, our teachers will sit with their class and be able to look that. Look at that data. And so it's about providing a response to those students. So by doing the progress monitoring, we should be able to catch that early on. We know students can learn if they're given the opportunities to do so. And so as we monitor that, catching that earlier and providing those targeted interventions is key. And then having the space to do that and making that a non-negotiable. Um, as far as pulling it into the daily calendar and having an embedded instructional. Time for interventions and enrichment. So that's probably our, the biggest thing. I think the other thing that you will see is that with the emphasis on the science of teaching reading and our early readers. I mean, we see those gaps all the way through, but we need to catch all students at a very young age. If we can, if we can help them to get to grade level by third grade when they're reading. It sets the, it sets the standard all the way through. So, you know, yes, we've gotta focus on three through twelve now too. But a real key to sustaining this improvement is to making sure that we get every student to grade level by third grade.
I was going to ask a question before you came up and spoke. One of your very last points, you talked about um your targeted instructional support. And my question was gonna say, we historically know that our newest teachers tend to be in these schools with the highest need students. What are we gonna do to support these teachers specifically? Is that what you were thinking is gonna help these teachers or did I misinterpret that information?
Well, there's not one answer to that, but I think the questions you're bringing up are something that I think we have to continually think about. Um, and when we have additional resources, how are we funneling them to our most needy campus? And we do that some now. You'll see it with an extra administrator or you'll have an SSI teacher and an instructional coach. So we are staffed differently at the campuses. Um, we may send out additional behavior support. For instance, um, this month, our um, our behavior support staff are actually going out and connecting with principals. To try to talk to them about how can we support new teachers, bridge teachers, some hotspots. And we know that in some campuses, they're gonna have greater needs than in others. Um, but we want to be able to provide that uh, that targeted support there. So it's different. Sometimes it's, it's behavioral so that they can have the learning environment in order to be able to do the instruction. Sometimes it's that, like you said, you've got more new teachers there. We've got the mentors in place to support them. Um, we differentiate the time that our executive directors are on the campus, supporting, you know, those campuses. Um, so it's not, there's not one thing. It really is understanding the data, where that particular campus is, and then wrapping the resources around the campus.
Ms. Richardson, if I can also add, you're, you're specifically asking about the, the, the young teachers, meaning the new to the profession. And I think the answer to that question primarily is this idea, this wraparound services. What we try to think about, what's a multi-pronged approach? We can take to make sure that teachers are learning not only the skills or the, what I call the art of teaching. Which includes not only how you manage a classroom, how you design a lesson, but then also the science of it actually delivering the right pedagogy, teaching, using the right strategies. Coaching is one area that where you look at best practice and they sit one-on-one uh with the teacher to help them. Model those lessons for them so they can see what good teaching looks like and give, get feedback. Mentoring, which is a different approach from coaching because the mentor can actually work on what I call uh more like the art of teaching. Help them think about how do you set up your classroom? How do you manage the, the students so that their individual needs are being met? And then all, all those things are also including working with them in terms of making what instructional decisions they need to make. So that they can deliver that individualized instruction for the, for the, the groups of kids based on what their data's saying. Cause brand-new teachers, it's, they're brand-new. And if you have bridge teachers, um, they've never even been in a classroom before and they haven't gone through student teaching. So you have to kinda think about it in terms of how, what, what, what would you normally learn in an education program? You had to teach people how to do while the kids are already in front of them. And at the same time, give them the sense, the, the chance to kinda grow and develop. So our approach has really been, the best way I can describe it is what you would do for a student would just wrap around services. Um, where you give them the attention and the professional learning periodically as the year progresses. Rather than just front-loading everything and letting kind of them go to work.
But to clarify, we are giving additional support to those teachers in need. At the highest need schools, especially where we are seeing, these scores are showing, they are not. They are below their peers in these demographics. And for me, that's heartbreaking. Because we say that we are a free public school for all students. And they are all going to get the support that they need. And that support isn't always equal. It doesn't always look the same. Um, and this data just really, it, that drove it home to me. When I was looking at those numbers, it made me sad in every subject and in every grade, they were the lowest.
And schools that are within our, our, what we call the SSN network. Um, those schools receive differentiated uh supports and resources to meet the needs of their students. And typically, those are the schools that are having the largest amount of struggles in terms of student achievement. And that group of schools typically is re-um grouped every year based upon how kids are responding to their instruction.
Thank you. I appreciate you. Thanks for letting me ask questions to both of you and to clarify. Um, I appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Fowler, and, and thank you, Dr. Buell and Dr. Lopez. Just, I'll, I guess I'll start with you, Dr. Lopez. Sorry for the switch.
No, y'all don't apologize. This is good.
I just have a, a few questions and ob- observation. Number one. I understand you're reticent in pointing out the obvious. Um, this was a major overhaul uh of the test and especially on the reading side. And if you look at our meets and masters. If I was going to Vegas and bet on the reason, I would bet the house on why that is. Um, it is what it is, but you know, to me, I think the important thing is looking at. Um, you, you mentioned the state, the state had similar drops in masters and meets. Um, it would be great, I think, if we could get that data. I've got that data versus our peers and versus just for this year. But I would like to see the, the same longitudinal data with the state. If we could get that sent to us via email.
Yes, sir.
Just as reference, um, because I think that's very important is we go into this next special session. And there's going to be a, a, a lot of talk. Around the state about this new accountability system and why it's so unfair. And how they moved the goalposts. It would be great to have that data that, to kinda, you know, help us when we're having those conversations. With our local delegations and with the community and, and our parents and concerned citizens. Um, so yeah, we could get that. And. I'm gonna have to go. Through, so the next question for you, and maybe this is for Dr. Wertz. Is looking at our HB three goals and now that the dust has settled with this redesign and we see the scores where they are. Um, at what point um should we reexamine our HB three goals and maybe readjust them to the new reality?
So actually, um, we're gonna probably bring goals for your consideration next, next board meeting um to think about. And I'll, I'll of course share them with y'all preliminarily so you can look at them. Um, I think the thing about it is, is there, it may be an opportunity to, to rethink about where we need to go. It's kinda, I think what you're referring to is what we did in the past, which is you normally have your five-year trajectory. And then there was a major shift, you have to maybe adjust the five-year trajectory, so it feels realistic. So we're, we will bring, um, we'll bring those goals for you to consider and possibly get feedback on, yeah.
Okay, great. Great. And then, um. Yeah, don't get me started on accountability, but I really appreciate you putting in all of the charts about all of the changes. Cause I think those are gonna be a great talking point, because this was a massive overhaul. And it's clearly going to impact and has impacted scores. And um, you know, the way you laid it out, I think clearly pointed to why we're seeing the results that we're seeing. Now, maybe shifting to Dr. Buell and, and um. Kinda piggybacking on my colleague Ms. Richardson's comments. I think providing those wraparound services and those specialized support for campuses is key. I'm glad you mentioned the SSN network. Um, I mean, we know statistically, when we look at the SSN campuses over the last few years. Where they were and the gap between similar echo disc cohort of campuses within our district. That, that strategy's worked and closed that gap. There's no statistical differences between, say, uh, twelve campuses. Same echo disc versus the twelve campuses that are, were in SSN. That strategy works. It's very intensive and probably very expensive. What are? We, we probably don't have the budget to expand it, but the needs are gonna be great going forward. So how is that strategy going to change? I didn't hear you mention SSN in your presentation as a response to this. But how are we thinking about retooling SSN or continuing it, uh, given the needs that we're gonna have this next year?
Yeah, so um, our executive directors um have their, have their uh learning communities that they work with. And we currently have one that's an SSN. Even though it's within the SSN, we take it to the needs of the campus. So, you know, as we, as we go through the data, which we're currently in the process of doing that. As we go through that data with the campus teams, we will be able to identify, we're asking them to do. In fact, we've done that the last two days and we'll finish up tomorrow. In small groups, we've brought two learning communities together each day. OSL has partnered um with assessment and accountability and we've led them through a root cause analysis process. So that we can start to develop their campus improvement plan strategies aligned to the data. So out of that, we'll be able to then determine what are the needs that may be missing? What's the gap in order to support this campus? So you're exactly right in the question that you're asking. We're kind of in the midst of that right now. And we're asking the, the principal along, they didn't come by themselves, they came with uh two leadership team members. To be able to really sit and reflect on the data. And then part of their protocol is to go back to their campus and get additional input on it. We wanna make sure that we're working on the right problem at each of the campuses and that may be different. And so we really are having them do that. We've had some great discussions over the last couple of days. You know, for instance, if you put um tier one planning, then we said, what's different about that this year? And we really focused on them doing less and doing it deep and doing the most meaningful work. So that's a little bit of a process, but that's an example right now of how we're supporting all of our campuses. And then from there, we'll be able to identify what you're saying. If there's a campus outside of the SSN and they have a need and it's driven by that data, we're gonna be responsive to that. One of the things I think we talk about a lot in the district is, you know, equity doesn't mean equal. And so I think we have to consistently think through that lens. And yeah, resources are tight. But I think we always, we always manage to figure that, especially when you start with, what's the real problem we're trying to just, to solve? So you're not just throwing everything at the wall to see if it sticks. So that's where we are right now with that process.
Yeah, and I, you know, looking at the data like I have, I know that. You know, in the past, and when you look at the longitudinal data, the, the SSN strategy works. I'm all as a board, you know, as a trustee, I will vote for funding that as much as we realistically can. Uh, given the other budget constraints, but what I'm afraid of. And, you know, Dr. Lopez has alluded to this and we know from talking to other districts. Is some of those campuses who are starting to close those gaps, the specific changes in this test and in accountability. Are going to harm them the most. And that's what I'm fearful of and I don't want those campuses to give, give up hope. Because under the old system, they were, uh, forget the system, they were objective. Because under the old system, they were, uh, mm, forget the system, they were objectively gaining ground and closing the gap. And I think that is still true today despite the scores that we're gonna see.
Yes.
And those campuses need to know that this, all that hard work was not for not. It, it, those kids are doing it and those teachers are making a difference. Um, I don't want that to get lost. But, I also don't want that to also cloud our judgment of what we know works.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And it, and it doesn't sound like that's going to be the case here. So, I, I appreciate that.
Yeah. No, you're exactly right, and I agree with you wholeheartedly that our staff has to feel, I'm convinced we're doing the right work. And we, while we're committed to continuous improvement, we have to keep doing the right work. And our, and our staff needs to know that wasn't, it's not for not, you know? And, uh, they need to feel supported. So, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buell.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Ms. McMorra?
Thank you, Dr. Buell and Dr. Lopez. Um, so, moving goalposts aside, and yes, it has moved, I love that analogy. Um, as a board member, I'm always after improved student outcomes. And so, I have, as y'all know, a really keen interest in third grade reading because, Dr. Buell mentioned, this is not just one of our HB3 goals, but this is the foundation for students to be successful, not just on STAR tests, but in life. It's, it's literacy. And so, um, I, I really had a couple of questions about that. I know that we already had, um, our refreshed, um, comprehensive literacy plan in place, and thank you for outlining a lot of those pieces for us. I learned a lot, um, just now as a board member, and I know a lot of y'all, um, did too. Thanks for recapping that. And I, Mr. Will Banks mentioned masters, and I know across the state, masters is down, um, particularly in third grade, um, reading. And I know that, I mean, at least my understanding is that the masters threshold is harder to cross now, given that extended constructed response addition. Um, it's weighted to be about twenty percent of the whole entire test. So, um, in addition to what you presented, how are we prioritizing writing? Um, writing across the grade levels and maybe even writing across the content areas? Can you just kind of summarize that?
Yeah, that, that's exactly right, and that's what we're starting to, to roll out. I think the other piece to that, because we, we have to teach writing, but not only do we have to teach it, but we have to teach it in alignment. Our instruction has to be aligned with the way it's going to be assessed. And so, I think that's really important to reorient teachers who may not understand what that looks like. And so, that's something that we've been talking a lot about in the curriculum and instruction department and how we can roll that out to make sure that that target is crystal clear. It's not that you're teaching to a test or it's the only thing you wanna do, but if you don't even know what the target is, how can you hit it? And so, we've been in a lot of discussions over that because you're right, we have to peel back the layers of the onion and say, we're doing a lot of the right things. What is it that we need to do differently to hit that mark? That's one of the things that, um, we've really been looking at. And I think that we will see, um, some good gains if we can, if we can help our students to be able to do that.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Because I know, you know, if we focus on good instruction, no matter what the assessment does.
Yes.
We're focusing on what's best for kids, and I think prioritizing writing is a best practice, and I'm glad that we're, we're after that. Um, I was curious, you talked a little bit about root cause, and I know that it's still early, but are we, as, at the district-wide level, going to take a look at lowest SEs and then consider how that is, um, what the offerings are at the district-wide level in our curriculum?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And when I talked in the presentation about the school progress monitoring, um, we've developed a district-level progress monitoring. Dr. Lopez is on there, I'm on there. It's a cross-section of CNI and, um, and academic services and OSL that are on this team. And we came through and developed, how will we mirror what we're asking campuses to do to monitor? So, for instance, after we give the first M-class screener, we will all come back together. We have a written protocol with our timelines. We will come back together, we will disaggregate that, we will look at that. And then, we've gotta think about what are the implications for possible curriculum changes? If we've got, uh, a particular skill that all of our students are loan, we've gotta really dig back into our curriculum and think about, how did we teach that? What resources are available? And get some feedback even from teachers so that we can adjust that so that when we get there next year, well, and even at the end of this year, because so much of it spirals, that we can raise our students', um, skill level there. So, I think it'll be our first year, um, at least that, that I've led the work, and I'm really excited about the implications it can have for us continually revisiting our curriculum and making it stronger and stronger. It's kind of an authentic approach to doing that, so.
That's exciting.
I think we'll find some things.
If I can just add one thing too.
Oh, yeah.
So, um, this is a really good question. I'm glad you asked it specifically about SEs because we've worked with our teachers and principals a lot on this. Um, one of the challenges that, that our teachers or principals typically have wanted to do is just look at the, the SEs based on how they performed on STAR and rush to make changes. And the, the problem is, is that the way the STAR is designed, which most people don't always realize, is that you can falsely overemphasize a specific student expectation because you, you looked and say, well, all these kids failed this question related to this SE. Well, the problem is, is that question was designed specifically to be difficult, and so, the majority of kids are actually not gonna pass that one question or the points related to that question. So, to your point, one of the ways that we have to think about it too is, we have our, our unit summative assessments, and it's, it's really teaching our teachers, how do your kids, how are they mastering the specific content as it's being taught in the unit that you just finished teaching, which are focused on those SEs and then adjusting along the way? And the good thing about now that all of the USAs are actually embedded into our, our system, we can actually see them online in Polaris, uh, we can look and see typically which units our kids struggling with across the district that we should actually go back and relook at in terms of the curriculum and not necessarily over-rely on the outcome specifically on STAR, but look and triangulate our information from a variety of assessment points. Um, so that we really are hyper-focusing on the SEs that really need improvement and not accidentally picking an SE that looks like it's everyone's failing, but it's because the test was designed for kids not to answer those few questions that actually target that SE, cause there's only so many questions you can ask on a test, and if there's a standard in Texas, we like to teach it. So, that's a really good question, yeah.
Thank you. And my last question, I, um, back to writing. So, I know that this year, it was very much like going into a cave with no flashlight, but now that we can look at the prompts that were given, and now that we have a new scoring guide that just came out, like, I think last week, are we able to guide or give teachers more guidance and more clarity on what prompts they could be using for their instruction? And I wanna ask about that because I'm not interested in just piling on more tests, but as far as like their writing instruction, are we able to offer them some good prompts that would, um, set them up for success?
Sure. I mean, we're, at this point, we're just, you know, analyzing where we are with it. We know though, in our just preliminary discussions, that a big piece of that is orient on our teachers, because the, like I said, they've gotta have the familiarity with where are they headed. So, I don't know exactly what steps we'll take to get there, but that's the discussion we're having right now is, what do we need? We know we need to provide that, and we will have something in place, um, for them. They've already started to embed it in the CLP, but we know that's an area that we've gotta continue to work on, especially with the change in the assessment.
Awesome. Thank y'all both so much.
Thank you, Ms. McMorra. Thank you so much, Dr. Buell. Thank you so much, Dr. Lopez, for this information and explaining it to us. We know how hard both of you are working along with your teams, and we appreciate the information and all you're doing to make sure that our students are successful and that we're moving in the right direction, and helping our teachers with what they need as well. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Now, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Forsberg, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am. We have one requester for non-agenda items.
Thank you, Ms. Forsberg. I'd like to call Brian Perry to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Perry. The second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. You will have two minutes to speak, and Ms. Forsberg will notify you when your time is up, and then please end your presentation. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Brian Perry, and as lead for the School Board Advisory Committee, I'm here representing Arlington Residents for Inclusion, a group nearly one thousand citizens strong. Uh, many of us are proud products of Arlington ISD, have students enrolled in the district or even employees of the district. As individuals, we continue to support the district and be engaged. It has come to our attention recently that there are organizations in Arlington openly accusing the district of teaching our children lessons hidden from parents or false harmful to some groups. I want to remind parents that they already have access to the TEACHS Resource System to review grade-level curriculum, and you have the parental right to ask your child's teachers about their lesson plans. So, um, I engage with my children daily and inquire what they are learning with all the challenges our district has risen and met. It's disappointing to us that any group would not only fail to support our children and teachers in challenging times, but through misrepresentation potentially jeopardize the future opportunities of our children by preventing them from receiving good public education. We thank you once again for being vigilant partners in our children's educations and future opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Perry. We appreciate it. We now come to the time for our superintendent's report. Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Fowler. I'd like to share some, some exciting news that's happened since the last superintendent's report, our last board meeting. The Texas Rangers All-Star shortstop Cory Seager stepped up to, in a big way, to help our students and families in transition program to get ready for this school year. Fifty of our students were given a shopping spree at Academy Saturday morning to stock up on gear for the school year. Seager was there along with several of his teammates to lend a hand and to help students and their families do some shopping, and it was a great day, and we're thankful for all the support from our community partners at the Texas Rangers. Uh, we were fortunate last week to literally celebrate the opening of the Newberry Elementary School with its dedication event, and to celebrate was a key word as Sir Earl Attune from Cool and the Gang was on hand singing a couple of the band's hits, and I think I, I think I witnessed a few of you all dancing and doing conga lines. Um, there was plenty of singing and dancing to go all around, including some moves by some of y'all, and, um, Berry Principal Rose Raven and her staff did a great job, and the event was packed with community members from all over, and it included tours of the school and ice cream for everyone, so it was a great event. And then, congratulations to seven of our students for participating in Education and Actions Lone Star Leadership Academy camps this summer. Three students from Bowles Junior High, two from Gunn Junior High, uh, and also Gunn Junior High Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, and a student from Bryant and, um, Morton Elementary spent a week learning about school by visiting historic Texas sites like NASA and the Sixth Floor Museum. Um, students were nominated to participate based on their leadership ability, academic success, and community involvement. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Do we have any school board members with reports? Ms. Richardson?
I had the pleasure to go yesterday to Mary Moore Elementary along with Trustee Hands and Mr. Chapa, and we were invited to come and read for Read Across America. It was amazing. We got to read to a bunch of third graders and went to six different classrooms. They had all sorts of books we could read from. I was partial. I brought my own book, Dragons Love Tacos. Apparently, a lot of them have already read it, but as I asked them, had they ever read it with a real dragon? And I brought my bearded dragon, Cream Puff, with me. And Cream Puff and I went and read, uh, Dragons Love Tacos and had a fabulous time. We are so glad we got to do it, and thank you to the third grade's lead, Mrs. Goldsacks, who invited us to come out and do that. I think we had as much fun as the kids did.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Will Banks?
I don't have a report, but I'm just curious. Does Cream Puff like tacos?
He does not like tacos, but he likes to read.
Oh, even better.
He likes cricket tacos. Cricket tacos.
Now, that's just gross, Dr. Raj. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
Yes, um, Trustee Will Banks asked for statewide longitudinal STAR data to be emailed to trustees.
Thank you, Ms. McMorra. It is now eight fifty-six, and we are adjourned.